Tuesday, June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, I call this meeting of the Beltrami County Board of Commissioners work meeting to order. Is there any new employees? Seeing none? Does anyone have any future work meeting topics that they would like to bring up?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Um, how about an update on, uh, solid waste and recycling operations?
Okay, solid waste update? Do would that include like the nine county?
It it could.
Okay.
Just like a general, uh, past, present, future.
Okay, good, thank you. Tim?
Uh, Mr. Chair, so I attended the, um, AMC District Two meeting last week, and there was a discussion about cannabis. Now, I'm not too sure if if there's any interest in meeting with the city in regards to their position on on what they are going to do, because I understand that what they decide is going to affect what we can do here at the county, and I don't know if there's any other issues that may warrant a a possible meeting, I'm not I'm not too sure.
Uh, we could bring that up, we could have that, we have number, item number ten is not, item number ten on the work sessions.
Yeah.
You could talk about them.
Okay.
Sure, okay, anybody else? Nope. With that, let's move on to the Kichigami Regional Library System update. And believe that is, Melissa? Welcome.
Welcome, thank you so much for having me, I appreciate getting to speak with you today, Beltrami County Board of Commissioners. I'd also like to introduce Sherry Warren, she is the, uh, branch manager of our local Bemidji Public Library Branch. And we are here today to discuss twenty twenty-five budget options. The Kichigami Board has not settled on their final budget for twenty twenty-five at this point, we are still exploring options and discussing them. We're bringing some options before the board, actually Thursday is our next board meeting, and then in July, they plan to approve it for final distribution to cities and counties. So we should see updated numbers in July. So at this point, we are here just to kind of generally discuss Kichigami and Beltrami County. So Kichigami is the library, regional library system that serves Beltrami County, in this county, we have two library branches, Bemidji and Black Duck. And we also offer a lot of resources on our website for e-resources, e-materials, and, uh, other research aids on our website. We try to enhance the quality life of your residents by giving them access to the information services that they need. We want to have programs for their education, entertainment, resources to connect them with the right info at the right time, and break train staff that care about and connect with their community members. We really work hard to create community connections, we bring in programming that our, uh, residents can enjoy. We also connect with the state to bring in great programs, like the State Parks Library Pass, where you can check out a library pass from their local library and go to a state park on the library's dime. We also bring in speakers, programs, and events, uh, and we really believe that this creates community connections. It's not just the information and entertainment you receive at these programs, it's also the way that you can create connections with others in your community, connect along those lines of interests and topics that are common at the library. So in Beltrami County in twenty twenty-three, had a great year at Bemidji Public Library, lots of visits, lots of users. I really do want to point out, one of my favorite things is, uh, two hundred sixty-seven meeting room uses that helped two thousand two hundred ninety-one community members, I really like to highlight that one. When people think of libraries, they always think of books, but I think it's important to let you know, we also have meeting room space, study space. We have wireless internet available, we have public computers available, those are some of our very well utilized resources here in Bemidji. We also have our Black Duck Community Library, again, a smaller library, smaller community library, but still just a ton of visits, users, and items. They also have an incredible amount of wireless internet uses. So even when the staff is not in the building, they are able to have patrons come to the parking lot and use that wireless internet, and that's a really great service for those up in, uh, Black Duck. We also offer our e-library, so in twenty twenty-three, in our whole region, um, we had a hundred and thirty, a hundred thirty-three thousand downloads. We also have, uh, sixty-two different informational databases available to us, and, uh, more than half a million uses of those databases. So it's a really good resource to help your school-age children, college-age children, anyone who needs to access that information online, they can access it through our website. Also, if we don't have books, we have an interlibrary loan program, I could go get it for you from Anoka County, I could even get it from you from North Dakota. So we do also have, offer physical materials statewide with interlibrary loan, if there's something that you do not find here. So for Kichigami's budgeting principles, uh, really what we do is we say, here's what we think we need for twenty twenty-five, we bring that information to you, and then we give you the chance to establish the revenue that you will provide to us. So we make a request, you tell us what you are willing to provide as our partner, and then we make adjustments as necessary. Uh, if there are any reductions needed, um, those reductions will occur in Beltrami County in order to prevent any, uh, reductions here from impacting service levels in other counties. So you do have the opportunity to suggest changes in service levels in order to adjust your levy request. So we are always open to a conversation, open to feedback, open to hearing about your concerns and requests for the budget for your libraries. So again, May through July, Kichigami reviews its budgeting, figures out what needs are for twenty twenty-five, figure out our own staffing, COLA increases, all of that kind of information. At the end of July, we will distribute the draft budgets to all of our cities and counties. We would request that you get information back to us, again, through, uh, Joe Gold, who is your, uh, Kichigami representative. You can contact me directly, let us know if there's any, uh, changes that are requested. Last year, I believe we initially came to you with an eleven percent levy increase request, and then got that reduced to four percent at your request, so we are always open to those conversations and open to making adjustments that keep the budget tolerable for all of our financial partners. In November, uh, we'll review any kind of correspondence from you, make any adjustments, make sure that we have everything ready for you for your final December. And then in January, we receive all of our confirmations from our cities and counties and approve that final budget. So because it kind of passed the ball back from us to you, back to us, it's a little bit of a lengthy process, but I feel like it gives us a good opportunity to have conversations about what the library needs are and how we can fit those needs inside of our partners' budgets. So for twenty twenty-five, again, I do not have budget documents for you today, because the twenty twenty-five KRLS budget is still in development. In June, uh, they will be reviewing their first draft, and that's Thursday. In July, there will be approval for distribution, and anytime from July to December, please respond to us with any requests for additions or changes. Apparently, Kichigami is exploring a two percent, three percent, and four percent COLA increase for our staff. We also have two percent step increases for staff. So people moving from one year to the next generally have a two percent increase, and we're exploring a COLA adjustment above that. In twenty twenty-four, the Kichigami Board, uh, approved proposal to add caller ID to our locations to improve security. So that is an anticipated cost increase for twenty twenty-five. But I did also want to let you know that there is a continuation of Kichigami's county levy buydown program for twenty twenty-five, and that twenty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars has been budgeted from Kichigami to reduce the Beltrami County levy for twenty twenty-five. And that program is, uh, kind of designed to go through about five years. So at about twenty twenty-eight, the Kichigami contribution to the Beltrami County levy is planned to end. So just heads up on that, kind of a reducing number headed towards twenty twenty-five. So that's what I got. So if you have any questions, I did want to also give you my contact information, I got my email, my phone number. Also, contact information for Sherry Warren, who is again, your Bemidji Public Library Branch Manager, and then Kelly Hanks is the Branch Manager for the Black Duck Community Library. So, uh, again, we will be distributing budget information out to you all, as we have clear information from the Kichigami Board, but I wanted to let you know where we're at right now and have an opportunity to have a discussion, if there were any questions or concerns they had so far. I'll back it up the slides, so you can see the information that you have.
Thanks, Melissa, any questions for Melissa or Sherry?
Mr. Chair.
Are you here, Tim?
Yeah. Well, I was, I was gonna try to leave my question today, but, uh, um, so a while ago, we, the Board received an email from, uh, Diane Mosin, uh, the President of the Kellyer Library and Information Center, and they're requesting, you know, ten thousand dollars for the, uh, Library and Information Center up there in Kellyer. And I'm just kind of curious to maybe learn or ask how if the KRLS, you know, can help out in in that way, or because these are, uh, taxpayers that do contribute to KRLS, but they feel that they're not getting, you know, the the services that they're they're paying for, so, I mean, I'm I'm trying to figure out, you know, how can we adequately help them? Um, I understand that there's a a library in Black Duck, uh, down here in Bemidji, but, I mean, you know the distance between here and there, so, I mean, it it's not, you know, I mean, the Bookmobile, you know, was was a huge success up there when it was around, and it it's my understanding that it's no longer on a table for discussion for the Bookmobile, um. Ten thousand dollars doesn't seem like a significant amount, but it is a huge amount for, you know, the the, uh, residents up in in the Kellye-Washish area, so, I mean, um, this, we we've been talking about this for for a number of years now, and it just seems like we're always hitting a a wall when when it comes to, you know, their issues, so just trying to figure out a solution to to help them. And if if there's any suggestions or or is?
Um, so, uh, we, up until twenty eleven, served Beltrami County through the Bookmobile, and the county at that time chose to stop funding the Bookmobile, so that's why the Bookmobile no longer operates within Beltrami County. I would love to bring it back and make sure that we're serving those residents. We are also exploring service options throughout our region, so we have other locations that are served by a Bookmobile where they kind of need more library services, so we're talking about alternate service delivery. We need something in between, the Bookmobile comes twice a month, and we're going to build a brand-new library. So what in between there can we do, and that's an ex- uh, service that we're kind of exploring. Is there an option to bring a Bookmobile for a full day? What would that cost? Who could pay that? Is there an option to have a link site, where I have a computer with an existing room within their own city, perhaps, building, and then we bring a collection out, so that they are able to access that collection? We do, of course, serve them through our e-resources, anyone is available to use Hoopla, use Flipster, use all of our e-resources. But I agree, nothing can really replace a physical library, where you can go in, view those materials, browse the wide selection of things that are available, you don't know what you need until you see it on the shelf sometimes. So I absolutely agree with you that those residents really do have a need for library services, and I would love to explore a way to bring those to them. So, uh, we have our mobile library policy, it does request that if somebody wants to add a mobile library stop, that they let us know by July first, so that we can include that in the county budget for the next year. But I would be very interested in hearing your contact up there, and we could probably set up a meeting, I bring anything to the Kichigami.
And, I mean, even maybe visiting, you know, the the city once a month, you know, could be a a good start, I am, I don't know, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, a solution, you know, because, like I said, we we hear this request year after year, and and I'm sure when it comes to, you know, the county's budget process, uh, they'll probably get next, and and we'll be hearing from them again next year, so, you know, hopefully we can figure, figure out a solution, thank you.
I appreciate that, I will reach out to that immediately and see if I can get in contact with people to discuss that need and start thinking of creative solutions to make sure that they're getting the library services they need, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, Melissa and Sherry, thank you.
Thank you all so much, if you have any questions, concerns, comments, up through Commissioner Gold to get to us, he's on the Budget Committee, he's on the main Kichigami Board, and he'll get your concerns addressed, so, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen? Airport Authority update. Short timer.
Everybody has to be there every, every once in a while, right? Thank you. Um, thank you for asking me to be here. Um, I'm Karen Weller, the Director of the Airport, as Commissioner Carlson said, I'm short timer, I'll be retiring at the end of next week, so. All right. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of an overview of the airport and the services we offer, things that are going on out there, um, and hopefully you'll find some good stuff in it. Oh, there we go. So if you look at our run, or our, this is an aerial view of the airport, and you can see that we have two runways, uh, one-three-three-one and seven-two-five, they're numbered by their, uh, compass magnetic headings. Uh, one-three is our longest runway at seven thousand and four feet, both runways are a hundred and fifty feet wide, and seven-two-five is about fifty-seven hundred feet long. Um, in, we always like to say we're the fourth busiest commercial service airport in the state of Minnesota. Now, I know it's a long shot for between Duluth, Rochester, and MSP, but we can still hold that title. So in twenty twenty-three, we had a total, uh, passenger count of fifty thousand people, and that's arriving and departing, so our airport does get used a fair amount. Um, in two thousand nineteen, we ran an economic impact study, and we found that the airport gave almost fifty-eight million dollars worth of economic impact to the community and provided about four hundred and fifty-nine jobs. Here is just a short list of the companies that are located at the airport. They don't necessarily have to be an airline or a fixed base operator, which is Bemidji Aviation. We have two air med services, the helicopters. Um, we have car rentals that do very well, um, Bureau of Indian Affairs and the DNR, and and obviously like the TSA and the FAA. So the Bemidji Airport is run by the Bemidji Regional Airport Authority, it was created by a joint powers agreement between the city and the county in two thousand eight, and you see our list of current, uh, board members. And then on our staff, we currently have five full-time people, which are two administrative, myself and Kyle Christensen, who is the Director of Operations, then we have three full-time maintenance people, and then, uh, five part-time maintenance operations, and the ARFF is Aircraft Rescue and Firefighting Services, and then we have two custodial. And these pictures kind of show, uh, a range of services, the the fire is obviously our fire training that we do every year, and then on the far left, you can see de-icing services that we offer for aircraft, any aircraft that comes in except, um, the Delta planes and Sun Country. And then we do get some flooding, and we do take care of snow removal, snow and ice control, um, and then mow in the summertime. So just a bit of history, um, if we go back, in nineteen thirty-one, I'm told that the Bemidji Civic and Commerce Association purchased a hundred and sixty acres for sixteen hundred dollars. Um, the association then presented the property to the city of Bemidji, and in nineteen forty-four, the US government designated the airport as a secondary defense airport and added a couple of runways. In nineteen fifty-two, uh, commercial service started at the airport. And as of right now, we are currently served by SkyWest, who flies under Delta's name, they offer, uh, flights two times a day to and from Minneapolis St. Paul um, under what's called the EAS or Essential Air Service Program, and currently, we have CRJ seven hundreds with dual-class service, so you can actually fly first class out of Bemidji. And as a side note, our first class has actually been full a lot. And then hopefully, some people have been able to take advantage of the Sun Country, uh, charters, they fly only to Laughlin because the um, the casino in Laughlin sponsors the flights and sells them. We recently had a, uh, meeting with our stakeholders, and there seemed to be a disconnect talking about general aviation and the commercial service, so I added these slides in here to show you that corporate aviation and general aviation are both very much alive at our airport. The, uh, aircraft on the left is a is a Gulfstream Five, and we recently had a government, um, group that came in, and they flew, actually flew in on a G-five. And to give you an example of the size, it has a wingspan of about ninety-three feet. We have, uh, flight training, the plane on the right is a Cessna one-seventy-two, and that's much smaller, one of thirty-six feet. And then down on the bottom is the King Air that will soon be going away, but MinDOT Aeronautics operates this, and they fly state employees all over the state. So if we look at how the airport is funded, it's through user fees, lease payments, our levy, passenger facility fees, and then these last two categories are very important to us, it's federal grants through the FAA, which basically fund our capital improvement program. And, um, then we also get grants through the uni- uh, through the MinDOT Aeronautics, uh, the state agency for, uh, airports that support airports in the state of Minnesota. Currently, um, Beltrami can't, or our area is designated as what they call an economically distressed area, so the FAA allows us to give, or they give us ninety-five percent of all of our projects. Um, then we get two and a half percent on our projects from the state of Minnesota, and so that leaves a local share of two and a half percent. And and I'll go through here, um, some projects that we've done over the last few years, but between two thousand eighteen and two twenty-four, these two programs have invested almost sixteen million dollars in our airport. So in two thousand eighteen, we bought a new fire truck, and we started a security, um, access program in the terminal. In two thousand nineteen, we added a large tractor to our, uh, fleet, our snow removal fleet, and I also did, the picture on the right is, we replaced a lot of, uh, concrete pads, concrete, um, blocks, I guess, where the aircraft park, specifically, um, the general aviation, the larger corporate planes, as well as our Delta plane. In twenty twenty, this was a huge construction year for us, we built, uh, four corporate hangars, you can see in the picture on the left, and then ten T-hangers. Uh, we also built a parking ramp that's on the right. Um, we can park many aircraft out there, we call it Planning Area Three. And then down on the bottom, we also expanded parking for smaller aircraft closer up to the terminal, um, what we call the West General Aviation Expansion. In twenty twenty-one, we replaced more concrete panels, and we also painted the old T-hangers, they're been around since the seventies, so coat of paint helped, not, not a lot, but they look a lot better, and the other pro- uh, project that we did that was just wonderful, we replaced the pavement around those old hangars, and it was arguably the worst pavement on the entire airport, and so we got that done. In twenty twenty-two, we added a loader to our snow removal fleet, and we also did some, uh, terminal apron joint sealing to try and, um, take care of our pavement. Twenty twenty-three was a very big year for us, we got from the FAA what's called a discretionary grant, it's where they give us a little bit, little, a lot more, uh, about five million dollars to reconstruct our runway. Um, and again, the local share was about two and a half percent of that. And what they did is they removed uh, two inches of asphalt and then replaced it with four inches, so it extends the life of the runway by at least another ten to fifteen years, and it was pretty much funded, like I said, ninety-five percent by the FAA. The things we have on our docket for this year, as long as bids come in good, we'd like to, um, expand and build another, uh, building for, that have, would have five T-hangers in it, we'd like to put in an aircraft self-help fueling, which appreciate the endorsement from the county board, uh, last month. And then we also, um, just finished up a taxi lane that will serve our Planning Area Three, um, on the northwest side of the airport. We are also working on custom zoning, uh, we have just submitted that to MinDOT Aeronautics for their review, it'll take about ninety days. Um, and really, what our goal there is to try and get rid of the variances that have happened in the past for zoning. Um, we also plan to, or we do have bids and have accepted for a new de- aircraft de-icing truck, and then we are looking at security checkpoint improvements. So this is perhaps one of my most favorite slides, a lot of people ask, you know, I don't fly, I don't fly myself, I don't fly commercially, how does the airport benefit me? You can see that, like I said before, we've got a a large economic impact for the region. Um, there are some jobs that are provided directly and indirectly by the airport. But what these next two things, specialty doctors fly into the area, and also traveling doctors and nurses come to area reservations. What that allows people to do is to see doctors here in the community, rather than having to travel to Fargo or Minneapolis or some other places like that. Um, don't have to take a day off work, um, you can go have your appointment and then be back home or work that evening. Um, another, uh, nice thing is blood and specimens are flown out for testing each week, lot of business travel, uh, BSU and Concordia Language Villages, um, their staff and students, which Concordia Language Villages now has programs that are offered year-round, um, some of it's through the military, they train them in different languages. So they have really, um, kind of revamped some of their programs to make themselves more diverse in the programs they offer. And then the last things is entertainers fly in, there's some, um, people that fly fly in to go hunting and fishing, and then the last one is anybody who uses next-day or two-day air shipping. Few people do that. So a saying that I always like to say is, a mile of highway only takes you a mile, but a mile of runway can take you anywhere. So, any questions?
Thanks, Karen.
Absolutely.
Any questions for Karen? Richard?
Uh, this is on the side, I was asked the other day, why are the jets sitting on the north side of the airport?
So Bemidji Aviation, um, they were doing a lot of cargo, and they are kind of repositioning their fleet, and those are planes that they're not using right now. They eventually would like to sell them. So, but they're, they're on, um, that one ramp that, yeah, right there, on the right. Yep.
Just a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Joe.
Um, you, you said that the airport doesn't provide de-icing for the Delta planes, is that because Delta takes cares?
That's correct.
For that themselves, okay.
They do it themselves, yep, and for Sun Country, because they do what's called ground handling them, they check the passengers in, handle the luggage, so they do the de-icing as well.
And then, uh, you guys had a, a, a big day-long meeting last week, uh, and and there was a SWAT analysis conducted, I was wondering if you could, uh, highlight, uh, a couple of those, um, items that kind of came out of there, you know, thinking to the future as far as any short-term or long-term goals for the airport. I don't know, just something that you thought was kind of interesting to come out of that part of it.
Well, big thing is, and it seems like a lot of people, whenever they do something like that, they find out they can communicate better. And so this, getting this message out and letting people know that you don't have to use the airport to benefit from it, so that was a big thing. Um, also, trying to balance, you know, the commercial side of things versus the general aviation. And in that, we found that a lot of people think of general aviation as the picture I showed, it was like a little one-seventy-two, perhaps, um, flight training, but we have, um, three M, when they have their corporate, uh, flight department come in. Um, we have a lot of companies, uh, throughout the area that fly in and out of the airport, and so to get that message out and let people know in the community how the airport benefits them.
Right. Um, and then just, I was wondering who was all invited to that, uh, day-long meeting yesterday, uh, who were the key stakeholders, I guess?
We invited, um, city management, county management, our board, there was, um, every tenant on the airport, and then all the users that we could think of that that kind of come in. There was every tenant on the airport and then all the users that we could think of that, that kind of come and go at the airport.
Plus a general public announcement.
Correct. Yeah. It was open to the public, so anybody could have come.
Thank you. Uh, Joe, I'll just, one thing that caught my attention at that was kind of interesting. It's like, and it's like, it seems insignificant, right? But can you imagine one of the big things was a grass runway? You think about that and you go, a grass runway, you go, what is that? Well, evidently there is people that have to train in certain kinds of planes and they have to practice on, and, and there's no way to do that at our airport. So I'm thinking that that might be a simple thing that we could do. We're hoping, I'm hoping that we can. But, but it was, but it was like, who knew? I mean, all of a sudden it was like, so we had about thirty people show up there. It was a really good gathering of a whole diverse group of people. So that was kind of interesting. Go ahead, Craig.
Just wondering, Karen, the, the lease agreement that you just got taken care of yesterday, did that get approved at the city council meeting? Was that able to get on the agenda and get approved for them to release the deed funding?
I did not hear back from the city manager. I talked to him yesterday and I sent him all the information and I, I don't think they discussed it, but I'm not sure.
Okay. So we still, you know, hopefully you can get some news before our meeting on Thursday morning.
Absolutely. I'll give them a call.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
For those of you, what I'm referring to is we've got some Department of Economic, or Employment and Economic Development money from the state that currently the city is holding as kind of our intermediary, whatever. And we needed to get for the planning area three development, we needed to get a developer to commit to building a hangar at the, kind of the start of it, so to speak. And we needed to get that lease agreement signed so that the city could not, you know, not feel like they'd be in jeopardy on their relationship with deed to be able to, to release that money to us. And that money isn't for the hangars. It's actually for the development of the road and the infrastructure needed for that, that planning area three. So we didn't really want to turn back one point six million dollars. So Karen did a great job of reaching out and one of the local business people stepped up to, to sign a lease agreement yesterday. And so we're hopeful to get that, that money released from the city.
Yes, that's very exciting.
Jim?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So first, I want to wish you well, you know, in your retirement. I do appreciate the presentation that you presented today. I've been on the board here for, for quite some time and I don't know if we've ever received such a detailed presentation from, from the airport. So I feel like I know a little bit more now than I did, you know, twenty minutes ago. So that's good. One of the questions I have is I, I noticed that there was some construction on the perimeter of the airport. It's kind of curious to know what that was for.
You mean close to Highway two?
Yeah, it just, it looks like they're building another roadway or something. I'm not too sure, so.
I thought, I thought I might have a better picture. But what, what's that, once we build out Planning Area Three, the plan is to have several hangars and actually all different sizes. And basically what that road is doing is paving it so the fuel truck can go up to the Planning Area Three and fuel planes once they're there.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Yep. Cause it was a dirt road before and.
And, uh, Mr. Chair, you mentioned something about a grass runway? Is there a grass runway at the airport? No.
Not at our airport.
Oh, okay. Well, I was, I was gonna say there is a grass runway up in Washtishe area. In Washtishe, if you're, if you're really looking for something to do, yeah, yeah. But listening to the folks up there, you know, I mean, they, they, you know, take a lot of pride in, in their runway that they have up there, you know. Listening to some of the folks, you know, talk about stories when they'd have to go out in cars and direct traffic with their, with their headlights and whatnot. So it's, um, so there is another airport in the county. It happens to be in Washtishe. So, thank you.
Yes. And, and I would, you know, I know I'm leaving, but I'm, I know my successor, whoever that is, would welcome any of you to come out and take a tour of the airport. You know, we can take you out on the runways and taxiways. We can show you the hangars. We can, you know, show you your asset that's in this county. Yeah. Did anybody take a ride on it? Did anybody take a ride on the B twenty-five this last weekend?
Tom did, didn't you? Or no? No?
All right. Any other questions for Karen? Thank you very much, Karen. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. With that, Amy, are you gonna do this? All right. Public Health Response Sustainability Grant Update.
But if I have any questions that I can't answer, I'm gonna lean on Chris to help me. How's that sound? All right. So as you're aware, in January twenty twenty-four, the Community Health Board received a hundred and nine thousand twenty, twenty, twenty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents from Minnesota Legislature, legislature, Minnesota Legislature requiring Public Health to Enhance Emergency Preparedness. So Public Health and Emergency Management have partnered to develop and build strong relationships to prepare and respond to emergency events. After careful analysts and consideration of priority areas to best use the funding prior to July one of twenty twenty-four, Public Health and Emergency Management partnered with the MIS team to enhance the technology services in the Emergency Operations Center. Emergency Preparedness and Emergency Management use this space to host meetings, trainings, and for storage of supplies. This is the only county room that has adequate space for standing up an incident command center in the event of emergency. And when looking at the focused areas that were allowed to use the funding in, it meets many of the different areas, including some of the grant duties which focus on education and training for employees and community members for preparedness for emergencies and emergency management, training, and other partnering with other communities outside of our Beltrami County in training, which we've already had the opportunity to host CIRC training, which covered areas from Duluth to as far as the river. And then a little bit south of us attended that training. But the most important one is that it, one of the grant duties says that we will use this funding to expand the use of technology platforms to support public health, emergency preparedness, response and recovery, and purchase new technology platforms for expanding the use of existing technology platforms. And so today I'm just here to provide you with an update as I did earlier in the year, letting you know that I would keep you apprised of any spending that was significant outside of, you know, normal salary stuff for this funding since it wasn't put into our twenty twenty-four budget. Any questions for myself or Chris?
Any questions for Amy? Yeah, Greg?
So Amy, this, I see the NLFX, I assume all that work is done now and working the, this, this NLFX professional, the stuff for that, for the room or no?
That is our bid.
Oh, that's a bid. Okay.
That's the bid.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's not done yet? Okay.
No, I wanted to make sure that there was not going to be any objection, objections to us using the money that way.
That's forty-two thousand. If they, if we go with that bid, there's still leftover? Is that just for next year or for whatever comes next?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Amy? Tim?
Uh, not so much a question, but maybe if we have a minute, you have a public health open house coming up soon?
Yeah, we do on Monday.
On Monday. Okay. What time?
Uh, eleven to one or one thirty.
So is that, is that showing the remodel or?
Yes, it's an opportunity for you guys to come and have a tour of the space, including the, the clinic and staff space.
Thank you.
No other questions? Thanks, Amy. Thanks for the update.
Yep, you're welcome.
MA Funding Unwind. Kurt, welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kurt Anderson, Economic Assistance Director with Health and Human Services. Just want to say, really appreciate the opportunity to be able to provide you an update here on where we are at with our MA renewals and, and also how we utilized our one-time funding we received from the state to help us with the MA renewal process. Oops, hit the wrong button. There we go. Okay. So really, the, the main thing that I, I wanted to be able to talk with you about is last year around the March-April timeframe, I had the opportunity to come before you and let you know of the changes based on the ending of the public health emergency that we were going to start renewals for, for our medical assistance county residents who are receiving some of those assist, or that assistance. And it really has been a really big deal because over the past three years, our clients had not had to report or provide that information. And so going back through this step by step was really important to make sure that we communicated with our county residents so that they were aware of it and try and minimize the amount of turbulence for our county residents if they had their medical assistance stopped and then restarted. So we were really trying to focus on that. With that, we received approximately three hundred and forty-five thousand, a little bit more than that, additional dollars from the state to help us in that. Again, one of the main focuses was making sure that we communicated with our residents and that we also had temporary staff to be able to process our renewals timely and efficiently for our county residents as well as improving the technology to help our eligibility specialists in that process. So back in, on the first of July was when the MA renewals process officially started for across the state of Minnesota. And within Beltrami County, we had a little over nine thousand nine hundred cases, which equated to just a little over seventeen thousand five hundred individuals here within Beltrami County who are receiving medical assistance. And these cases needed to be renewed over the next twelve months. And when Will and I came and, and talked with, with the board here, we knew that we needed to communicate well with our clients. That was one of the big things. And then when we had the extra funding as, as we had received the guidance from the county board, these temporary positions to assist us in processing that were just that, temporary. And that we would attrit them over the course of the year to make sure that we were back to, you know, base as far as employees by the first of July. To communicate with our clients, we coordinated to make sure that we had both print, radio, and we used Bemidji Pioneer Internet with that to be able to let people know how to get in touch with updating their address was probably the biggest thing because many of our clients had not had to report a change of address for three years. So we wanted to make sure that we had the right address to get them the information and then make sure that we then processed it timely. Where we are, based off of our April count, we had still eight thousand two hundred medical assistance cases. When you take a look at where we were pre-pandemic, we are trending back to the amount of cases to expect within Beltrami pre-pandemic as well as having fourth, fourteen thousand five hundred, a little over fourteen thousand five hundred individuals within the, the county that are receiving medical assistance. For Beltrami County, that trends exactly in the same position that the rest of the state of Minnesota is trending with that. So we're, we're all seeing a slight decrease as we go down with that. Many of these cases that have not renewed, it's been for good reasons. They've had income increases over the three years and now are able to convert to a different form of Minnesota care as, as opposed to medical assistance. So that's, that, that is a good piece with that. We've also seen across this year, changes to the medical assistance technology that has been utilized. So when we started in July, we only had seventeen percent of our cases that actually auto-renewed for the client without them having to communicate back to the county and provide certain verifications because we already had those verifications, electronic systems to verify that. We are now in the process when it comes to August, where within our Minnesota Eligibility Technology System, or we call it METS, which really processes our family cases, we are at an eighty-one percent renewal rate across the state of Minnesota, automatic renewal rate. So that means there's only nineteen percent of our residents really that we're having to make sure that we reach out to them, get that income verification, if that's what it is that we need. And, and out of those ones that don't auto-renew, ninety-five percent of it has to do with ensuring that we get updated income information from those clients. As to date, we have spent approximately ninety percent of that one-time funding. And the remainder of that funding is still dedicated toward overtime to ensure that we're processing those cases as well as any additional technology requirements that we're able to, that, that come up with our caseworks system. We have attrited the one extra eligibility specialist and the two case aids as of May. So we are now back to ten consolidated case aids within our IMU and thirty-six eligibility specialists as when we started before this. And so based off of that, what are your questions, Commissioners?
Any questions for Kurt?
Mr. Chair, of course. I gotta try to keep these meetings entertaining, so. The seventeen thousand five hundred number that you mentioned, did that include Red Lake numbers or was that this Beltrami County's?
That did include residents that resided on Red Lake Nation for medical assistance as well. Yes.
And, and of those eight thousand that, that renewed, do you know how many were from the reservation or?
Uh, we have had, I don't have the exact numbers within the METS system because that processing is actually done by the state of Minnesota for our residents that are tribally enrolled with that. We have been during this process as we, because our partners at Oshkosh Matata have started taking medical assistance on the, in the MAXA system that we use. As we have had renewals of cases that are tribally enrolled with Red Lake Nation, we've been able to take those cases if that and like if they're SNAP. But the only reason we have it is because of the medical assistance. Once we have renewed that client and have a clean case, we've then been able to transfer it to our partners over at Oshkosh Matata.
Okay.
And so that's only been approximately eighty-six cases so far within that system. But again, a majority of, of those cases that we have across the county are really within that METS system. And those are already split between the state of Minnesota processing for those residents on, in Red Lake Nation as opposed to those residing within the county.
Thank you.
Joe?
Uh, thank you. Yes. What would you say the, the average number of cases each eligibility specialist works on? And you, would you say you're pretty comfortable with the number of eligibility specialists you have right now? Or would you be a little more comfortable with a few extra staff or just, if you could talk about that a little bit?
We are, I, and I don't have the numbers on me, Commissioner Gold. Um, I know I did send that, send that email. We, we average within our adult team and there are healthcare cases within our adult team. We are now moving toward, from case banking, we now have enough adult eligibility specialists to do case management or caseloads, which is going to allow us to provide better service to the clients because it's one eligibility specialist working that case as, as opposed to a team. And they are going to average about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty cases in eligibility specialists to maintain over the year. Our METS numbers are, are higher than that. But then the thing with our METS system is our clients are able to call in and I will get you the numbers on the METS system, Commissioner Gold.
Thank you. Do they also have any questions? I did, just a quick question. Kurt, did, how did it go overall compared to what you thought it might look like? Did it, was it, did it, were you able to meet expectations? Was it, did you have a better than?
There was, there was some rough, some, some rocky parts. A lot of this had to do with changes that were coming, not from the state, but there were lots of changes that the state was getting also from the fed, from the federal level as we were trying to make sure that we did not inadvertently close a case that we should not close. So we, so we had a little so we had a little bit of a rough time at first, but the good thing with that is as we identified issues and communicated with, uh, the state of Minnesota and DHS, they were also able to get waivers where we were able to hold people on longer for medical assistance, which then allowed us a chance to process their renewals, um, with that piece. So in combination of, you know, communicating both with the clients and, and up with the state, I think the process ended up being a lot smoother than what I expected.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Thanks, Kurt.
Thank you.
Highway grant updates. We're a little ahead of schedule, so I appreciate your, uh, zooming in with your umbrella. Thanks, Bruce.
First item I have for you is some more good news. I'll hit you with the good stuff first. Uh, the highway department, uh, Beltrami County has received two more grants. Uh, the first one is a state grant. Uh, we had, uh, talked about this project in the past, uh, but it is the bike trail from the Jefferson roundabout out to the high school. Uh, this grant is a hundred percent funding for the construction costs. Uh, that was one of the requirements that the board wanted to see was for that project was a hundred percent construction funds. And so this, uh, project successfully, uh, received some funding. Uh, it is a quick turnaround for us. It is a, a twenty-five or a twenty-six year project. And so right now we're planning to construct that next year. So that is a quick, again, a quick turnaround for us. And so we're utilizing this time right now to finish up the design on it, but, uh, we got, uh, just over seven hundred thousand dollars for that, for that trail project. So one good project there to get funding for. Uh, the second one is, uh, two hundred thousand dollars, uh, federal funds. It is for our, uh, safety, uh, transportation, safety, uh, planning. Uh, we have done a current road safety plan in the past. We've done it twice. On the federal side, they call those action plans. Um, but it is the, pretty much the same thing. Uh, we look across our entire system. They look at, uh, the types of crashes we're having and all kinds of road features and where those crashes might happen and then propose projects. And so again, through our two current road safety plans, we've used that to apply for federal funding to do our, uh, safety projects. And that's what this, uh, action plan would do is, uh, redo that safety plan and come up with another list of safety projects that we could apply for in the future. But, uh, this one, uh, being a federal funds, um, and they, they've changed their requirements for the, these, um, nationwide safety funds got to meet certain criteria. And so this safety plan will help us meet those criteria when we're applying for those funds. We still can apply for the federal funds that are earmarked for the state. Those are Hzip or Highway Safety Improvement Program Funds. We'll still be able to apply for those, but, uh, again, this will help come up with a new list of safety projects to, to can you continue doing. So. Two good notes there.
Mr. Chair. Um, Bruce, with the grant funding, um, I know that last couple of years, you know, we, there was some hesitation from the board here in regards to that. I'm just kind of curious. And, and that, um, project, was, was there any mention of the maintenance cost and who would be responsible for those costs?
Uh, you're talking the trail project? Yeah, right now that would be county responsibility. Yeah, it's along a county road. And so that would be county maintenance responsibility.
So are you finding grant funding for, for maintenance cost? No?
No, those would fall underneath, they're gonna fall underneath, uh, our road. Maintenance costs with that trail alongside of it.
Thank you.
So Bruce, I just quick question. You've been on a roll lately with these grant funding. I'm just wondering if maybe you could buy a Lotto ticket for Beltrami County?
I've been buying them for myself first, so. And I'm still standing here, so I'm not that lucky. Thanks, Bruce. Uh, the next item I have for you is GD two. Uh, this is, uh, I'm gonna start kind of general here. Again, we have, uh, judicial ditches across the county. Um, a good share of them are, I'm gonna say active where we are pulling in assessments. Those assessments pay for all costs for maintaining those ditch systems. Uh, however, we have some systems out there that are inactive. They have not had those assessments, uh, done for a long time. Uh, this is one of those ditch systems. But as the county, we are in charge of administering these ditch systems. And that is to collect assessments, to do inspections and keep that ditch in repair so that those beneficiaries of that system keep getting that ditch or that drainage benefit. And so we are, there's actually was a case that a county was, uh, sued and lost because they weren't doing that job. And so since then, we've been looking at our, our inactive ditch systems, uh, slowly working away at them and either, um, starting to collect assessments or abandoning them, getting rid of them. And there's a specific process that we need to go through with those. And with those ditch systems, usually we go out to the public, sorry, not the public, but to the beneficiaries of that ditch system and say, hey, do you want this drainage? Do you not? Um, we can abandon or we can start collecting assessments and do some, again, inspection and maintenance on those. And so normally we're going through that process and getting some input from the beneficiaries and before we're taking those act, those actions. Uh, with this ditch system though, I wanted some input from the board before moving ahead with that because GD twelve is fully within the city of Bemidji. Uh, the city of Bemidji has its own, uh, storm water. What do they call it? Uh, storm water management system. And so they actually collect a fee across the city, uh, based on impervious area. And so they got this funding source to help take care of drainage across the city. Uh, so with this ditch system within the city of Bemidji, potentially the beneficiaries could be paying twice for, you know, drainage. They could be paying for the drainage benefit of this ditch system and then that stormwater fee to the city. Um, so before we go out to the, the beneficiaries and say, you know, what would you like to do? Another option that we have is we could hand over control of this ditch to the city. Um, it is allowed state statute to, or a county board to hand over jurisdiction of a judicial ditch system to another agency like a city, if it's within, you know, the ditches within the city or a watershed district or, uh, you know, some other agency that is in charge of drainage. And we have done that many, many, many years ago. There are some ditch systems that were given over to the Red Lake Watershed District. But this one here, being in the city, I guess that is my recommendation is that we approach the city and say, would you like to take over JD two? And with intent of that, those beneficiaries or the people in the city are not being taxed twice for the drainage. And so I guess I would like put some input on the board to, to proceed with approaching the city, uh, regarding this or, or not, or how would you like to proceed, I guess?
So this is the large, this is the large ditch that kind of comes over past the land over by the juvenile training center kind of in that area. And then it ultimately dumps into the swamp right by, uh, Lake Urban. Is that correct?
Yep.
Um, the, the city of Bemidji doesn't use that at all for any part of their storm water?
They do.
They do. So they already using it?
Yep.
Uh, is there any financial reason why we wouldn't? Just hand it over to the city if they want it?
Um, I guess, again, and my recommendation is that we hand it over to the city. Um, again, there will be the original beneficiaries of that ditch that were deemed that they, again, benefited from the ditch and all paying their share of it. And, uh, yeah, some of it is city streets, you know, they would be paying share, but there's a whole bunch of residents there that would be paying a share of it. Um, if they were to be reactivated and kept as a GD. But, uh, yeah, the, the benefit, um, in my mind is hand it over to the city and they can continue, um, using their stormwater management fee to help take care of drainage in the city and not tax these beneficiaries twice.
Have you had any discussions with Sam? Would he be the one that, uh?
Yeah, I've, I've, uh, had a couple of meetings with Sam and gone through this with him and, and he's in agreement with me. So it's more of, uh, the approach to the city council.
Questions for Bruce?
Um, do you know if the city's, uh, maintaining any ditches right now?
They're not doing any maintenance on this ditch, no. And then we haven't, we haven't been made.
Any other ones? Are they doing same or similar work anywhere else? Any other ditches within the city?
Well, not on a judicial ditch system that I'm aware of. They would have their own stormwater systems, stormwater ponds, ditches and stuff that they're taking care of.
Right.
But.
Mr. Chair, Richard. Yeah, I, I personally think that would be a good way to handle it because if I were one of the beneficiaries, I wouldn't like to have to pay two different assessments and have two different governmental units trying to take care of that same.
Yeah.
Issue. I think it just makes sense and why not streamline?
Craig?
Yeah. Yeah.
The one, I guess the one question or one thought I had was, you know, this would be a great topic for a county city council joint meeting to have. If there was one in the future, but at this point I'm able to take it to the council myself, so I would.
I, anyone opposed to that idea? Jim?
Mr. Chair, so Bruce, well, it sounds like the city might be in favor of, of, uh, of this, but what, what if they weren't? Then the other, well, this. Yeah, the residents will be.
I think the, I think the, I guess I did not look at the statutes of if we can force it upon them. I don't think, I mean, I mean, in my opinion, you're gonna wanna work, you know, be neighbors and give it to them if they want it. If they don't want it, then our option is then to go to the beneficiaries and say, explain it to them that this is a ditch system and do they benefit from it? Do they wanna keep it? The other option, um, would be to abandon it or start collecting assessments and maintaining it.
And, um, I like the suggestion that, you know, if there is a potential meeting in the future between the county and city, that maybe this is, you know, a topic if, if, uh, if something that we, you know, agree to. Thank you.
Yeah, I think have, have Bruce move forward with it now and, uh, and that's instead of some potential future meeting that we may or may not have with the election this year and everything else. I don't know that that's gonna be real soon, so say, go for it, Bruce.
Yeah, it, I'm assuming it's gonna take a little bit of time to get on their agenda, present it, let them ponder it, get a, you know, response back before it ever comes back to the, the actual following through with, with something. So I think getting the process going would be good.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. All right, Brent. Brent and Tom.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'll kick this off as, uh, we're gonna tag team this just a little bit. Um, I put in your packet, uh, documentation, information about today's, uh, presentation, uh, and the need for it. Essentially, uh, some of you attended the, uh, Association of Minnesota Counties District Meeting, uh, about two weeks or so ago where this issue came up and we were encouraged by district leadership to, or actually AMC leadership to, uh, consider moving more quickly than we had anticipated we would have to on this particular subject. As you know, uh, the state of Minnesota has been marching towards legalization of cannabis throughout the state. And there've been, uh, certain deadlines and timelines and rulemaking and all of these sorts of things that have uh, been put in place and actually changed. Um, they're still tinkering with, uh, some of that, uh, even in this last legislative session. And so essentially, um, what we've learned is that the OCM, which is called the Office of Cannabis Management, is offering early registration for cannabis licenses much sooner than we had expected. Um, they'll actually open up a, what we, what they're calling a social equity pre-approval verification on June twenty-fourth, which will remain open until July the tenth. Uh, this is to sort of pre-vet, uh, social equity applicants. And then after they do that, uh, these social equity applicants, uh, may be approved, uh, as soon as July twenty-fourth of this year. Uh, that means that the county would need to have in place, if it's so desired, some type of rules or regulations via an ordinance, uh, to help govern the issuance of these, uh, registrations and licenses, uh, within our county. Uh, absent of any kind of rules or ordinances around that, um, essentially the state will take primacy and, and issue those and we will not be, uh, essentially having any rights to uh, place conditions or location requirements or performance standards or any of those other sorts of things in regards to, uh, the cannabis industry. Um, and so that's, that's the concern here is that, uh, we had believed that regular uh, licensing and registration would begin January first of twenty twenty-five with these pre-registrations and this sort of early um, approval process has caused us to have to, like many counties, essentially rethink our approach to this. Uh, one of the things that we've been thinking about is obviously there isn't really enough time for us to go through the ordinance-making process uh, to develop a wise, uh, public health and safety focused ordinance if we, again, we were so desirous of doing that. And so we would need time to do that. One thing that is, um, beneficial is that the legislation, uh, that exists currently does allow for counties to take the time necessary to go through those processes, um, by instituting essentially what's called a pause on any of these, uh, applications, uh, from being processed. And that pause comes in the form of what's called an interim moratorium. And so that's what Brent's gonna talk with you a little bit about today. Uh, if you're interested in conducting, uh, or, or I should say passing an interim ordinance uh, for a moratorium to give us a longer period of time to sort of work through these issues. Uh, he'll share with you that process. We'll need to schedule a public hearing, uh, and those sorts of things. So he's got a presentation teed up here and, uh, will provide all the details around that and some of the benefits of um, developing an interim moratorium. Then we can stand for questions, uh, at the end.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Um, I'm Brent Rude, Director of Environmental Services. And like Tom said, we're just gonna kind of go through a, a presentation quick. Some of these slides are basically regurgitating information that AMC had provided to several of you at the spring meetings. Um, I'm just gonna jump right into it. Um, lot of information here, but, um, essentially the OCM, the Office of Cannabis Management, um, is the, the state agency that's gonna be working on licensing, permitting, establishing rules for, for these businesses. And they are working on administrative rules right now and they're working on model ordinances right now. And we were anticipating having these conversations once those have been completed and we know more information, but those aren't completed yet. And so we're kind of forced into this, do we plan? Do we not plan based on not knowing what the rules are quite yet? So, um, that's coming soon. Um, it's, this has happened in other states. We're not new to this and other counties and other states have adopted different things all over the board. And so, um, we may wanna look at some of the things that other states have adopted, other counties and cities and other states have adopted as well. Um, this is kind of summarizing the retail business registration. Um, cannabis retail businesses have to register with the local government. If we don't have an ordinance of any kind, there won't be a registration process. They'll just get their permit license from the state and, and they'll move along. Um, cities and towns can delegate the registration authority of the county. We don't, um, license the, or register the other non-retail businesses, but there can be limits put on where some of those businesses can be located if we choose to do so. Or we can establish the, a limit to the number as well. So zoning is generally the, the background laws and statutes that, that enable this to be even considered, uh, and putting regulations in. And so the county may want to entertain different zoning districts or if they'll need conditional use permits or interim use permits, where they could be allowed, where they wouldn't be allowed. Um, in statute, the bottom part there, statute specifically lays out that a local government may prohibit the operation within those distances from those items. Um, it's the typical school or playground, athletic field type stuff. Um, and so those are, those are options that are laid out in statute. Um, the interesting thing for me was statute typically doesn't lay out this type of stuff for local governments. And so the fact that they did, it kind of implies that maybe we can't institute any other distances from other things because they singled these out. But those are things that we'll have to learn more about when they create the administrative rules. Here's some other considerations. Here's some other considerations in considering whether or not this regulation is, or any regulation of this industry is necessary. So. Things we could put performance standards in the, on the businesses. Um, dealing with odor and ventilation, um, just a brief reading that I've been doing the last week or so. Um, some of the reach, some of the cannabis grow businesses have an odor like a feedlot. Um, so where those are located, um, or how they're dealt with, uh, with their odor controls and ventilation. May matter. It may become a nuisance at some point. I don't know enough about that to tell you that that is a problem. I just. What I've been reading, it says it can be. So there's several other issues that, that would be considered. So the recommendation establishing, establishing a moratorium is, um, based on Minnesota Rules thirty four, three forty-two point one three E. That statute allows local governments to establish an interim ordinance to take time to study and, um, adopt rules that relate to zoning. The statute only allows us to do this until January first, two thousand twenty-five. Um, normally if a county wants to adopt or a city, any local government wants to adopt a moratorium, typically that you can do that for twelve months. Um, this one puts a deadline on January first, twenty twenty-five is the longest it could be out there for. Um, and it has to be for the purpose of conducting studies or considering whether or not to adopt these rules. We, we can't just adopt a moratorium and then do nothing and wait as a, as a means to slow things down or anything. And that's certainly not the intent. Benefits of a moratorium. So again, it's, it's not intended to impede the implementation of the law. It's really to create us ourselves time to consider some of these other things thoughtfully. So. Allow the OCM to complete the rulemaking and the guidance and, um, have model ordinances out there. To establish any zoning regulations or things like that that we would like to do. Um, we would utilize the Planning and Zoning Commission to do, to complete the work. The Planning Commission is the one that typically considers ordinances and stuff. At the bottom here is a list of counties with moratoriums right now. This is not an extensive, uh, exhaustive list. There are more than just this that have moratoriums out there. That list is changing every week. Um, these, this is just one that was verified as of about a week ago through a, a third party source that had put something together. I've been, I've been looking around a little bit at the Minnesota Association County Planning and Zoning Administrators information. And based on what I'm seeing there, it looks like. There's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about fifty counties that are in the process of doing this similar type of thing of. Of considering whether or not to adopt a moratorium or have, holding public hearings to adopt a moratorium. So if you choose to go forward and schedule a public hearing to consider adopting a moratorium and then that ultimately were to pass. Here's some activities that would need to be accomplished or. Laying out a, a process for how we would move forward. Um, we would like to review ordinances from AMC and OCM when they become available. Conduct stakeholder meetings, hold planning commission meetings. Evaluate any other related ordinances, drafts and zoning language, conduct additional public hearings for those ordinances. And then prepare and present the final zoning language. Um, I can share with you, I've spoken with the city and they're having these conversations right now as well. They're, um. They're anxiously waiting to see what you guys do, obviously. They're going to be watching these proceedings, um, to see what other issues or things come up that. That they're going to need to address as well. The city in the past, from what I understand, has, um. Has voted by a narrow margin to not limit where cannabis can be used in public places in the past. And that was pretty early on after the, the legislation changed and laws were passed. And so I'm not sure if they're going to have different views on it now as we get closer to implementation or not, but I know they're going to be discussing that. And the other, the other thing I guess I forgot to mention that I want to point out is that, um. We could limit, the, the statute allows limits for the number of businesses. So by statute, I think both Beltrami County's population, I believe we'd be, um, we'd be able to limit it to four if we so chose. The city could limit it to two if they so chose. And the other kind of wild card in there is the tribes. Um, from what we're understanding is the tribes are going to be issued these compacts from the state of Minnesota where they're going to be getting a certain number of. Permits or licenses or whatever they're called, and they can establish, um, where they see best fit. And those won't count against the, the limits that any county or city can establish as well. So, um, so there will be some of these businesses around that'll be providing this, this need for the population that so chooses to do that. But it wouldn't be a. It wouldn't be an extreme limitation or, uh, you know, they're prohibited everywhere, but there would be a certain number of them that would be allowed regardless of what the county chooses to do. So. A couple of important dates. I think Tom kind of went through this a little bit already. That the original date for counties to have ordinances in place was January first. This last legislative session, they've kind of, uh, added this little wild card of moving that up potentially. We don't know exactly when they will issue those permits or licenses. But we know they could be as early as the end of July. And, um, we're just kind of waiting on their model ordinance and administrative rules to be finalized and they're supposed to be out sometime this summer. The last we've, we've been told. So the next step, if you, if you're okay with this, if you choose to do this, is to schedule a public hearing for July, we. Timeframe, we're looking at scheduling in July second, public hearing. Um, and the purpose of a public hearing would be to gather public input and then the commissioners can decide. If you would like to adopt the moratorium ordinance or not at that time or at the meeting after that or at whatever your leisure is. And that's, that's all we really have for you today. So I guess we're just kind of looking for guidance on whether we should schedule a public hearing or not. And. I know there's no votes being taken and, and things like that, but, um. We don't want to spend this effort and, and time to, to do something like this if it's not something that the county board wishes we would do.
We can do this with just consensus here. We don't have to put it on as an agenda item and, and vote on the public hearing thing. Okay?
Yep, because we're, all we'd be doing is scheduling a public hearing to get public input and then the board would be voting officially on whether to adopt an ordinance at that point or not. Yep.
Richard? Yeah, I'm always in favor of getting the public input on some issues that, uh. Maybe haven't come before the board before or are new.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I'm supportive of the recommendation.
Okay. Jim?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm in support of a public hearing. I think it's important that we hear from. You know, our community members on, on, uh, their thoughts about, uh, about this. But I got a question, um. You mentioned that there's no limit on, on businesses that, that can, um, open up, correct?
If the county chooses not to adopt an ordinance of any kind at the end of the day. Then the county wouldn't be able to have a limit on it and the state would just issue permits for any business that applied. As long as they meet the zoning requirements that they're proposing to do that in.
Whether, whether the colony. Um, adopts them, uh. These, these businesses are not, that the state can still issue these licenses within the county, correct?
I guess that, so if we adopt a moratorium, the state would honor that moratorium until January first, two thousand twenty-five. So they wouldn't issue any licenses or permits until that time. And. So the idea then is that we would need to have whatever permanent rules or no rules. Decided by then and adopted so that the state would review any applications based on what rules were in place at the local level at that time. And then they would issue permits.
So is, is there anything that says that we have to have? Uh, businesses in, in the county? Are, are, are there requirements?
Yep. So we can only limit it to one per every twelve thousand five hundred people. That's the lowest we could ever go.
So if we're a county of forty-five thousand, you know.
So we would have to have at least four.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the requirements are different for the city, correct?
It's the same. It's twelve thousand five hundred. So for example, the city Bemidji is fifteen thousand people roughly. So they would have, they could limit it to two if they chose to. And the county could limit it to four if they chose to. And.
So there, there would be six right there.
Well, it wouldn't have to be because the county, the county wouldn't have to issue four fully from the way I understand it. If the city had already done their two and vice versa. If the, the, the examples that I've read through, if the county issued four. Registrations somewhere outside of the city, the city could choose to then do none because the county quota of four has been met. I have no idea how this will actually play out and I think that though that answer may actually change as the summer goes on and these administrative rules get more defined.
Or what if somebody in, in like Black Duck, you know, in the city limits of Black Duck wants to. Open a shop, do, do they have in the city of Black Duck limit, uh?
Yep. So cities can adopt their own rules, whatever they, and they could adopt a rule that says. Come one, come all, we'll take all of you. And they could have an unlimited number and the county, as far as I understand, the county couldn't. Do anything about that, even if we had a, um, maximum number that we allowed. Um, I think the city of Black Duck would still be within their rights to issue twenty of them. That's the way I understand it.
That's, that's the way I understand it too. And, and, um. But I think, you know, th- these questions, it is proof that, you know, I think it's important that we have a, a public hearing.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, I'm in support of a, a public hearing. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Brent, it looks like we have a unanimous approval of a public hearing. Um, I just, a quick question. Going beyond that down the road, let's say that we end up with a moratorium to give more consideration to. So you recommending maybe we have a committee of. Maybe public health and the sheriff and to sort of work on that body of work?
Yes. So we, we actually have already met with a few of us. Um, so like county administrator, myself, the sheriff, we have public health. Um, and we've talked about a few other people that would probably need to be brought in. There are a number of policy questions. That if a moratorium is adopted and we, and we do move forward on that, there's a number of policy items that we're going to want to bring to the board as a group. And say, you know, get your input on what direction should we go with this stuff? What are you really looking for? Because we can bring this to the planning commission or we could, we can go draft ordinances, but at the end of the day. If it's not what the county board is really looking for, we're going to be spending a lot of time that we probably don't have. Um, so we can go back and forth, but I think we're going to end up bringing, identifying what those policy issues are early on. And bringing those to the, to the board at a work session for some guidance on those. I think that's probably one of the first steps that we would be looking to do. So.
Mr. Chair. Do you know if there's any, any folks in the county that are. Currently planning to apply for these licenses or, or building businesses or anything like that?
I've heard a rumor of one. Um. I haven't heard that from the people involved though, so I don't know. I would assume that there are. But I don't, I don't know for sure.
Because if I, if I understood at, at our meeting with the AMC district two is that. It's kind of like a first come, first served basis, correct? So.
Yeah. And what I've been understanding is if, so again, we go back to that kind of a minimum number, just because it's easier to talk about that as an example. Let's say the county chose to limit it to four. And through the lottery of these social equity applicants, if there were four business registrations already. Approved or permitted through that process, by the time they get to January first. The way I understand it is there may not be any more permits available in Beltrami County for anybody else to apply for. But I'm not sure how that is going to play out.
Yeah, because I mean, I, yeah, there's a lot of unknowns and a lot of questions, so.
Yes, for all of us. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, uh, thanks. Just, uh, I think this is evident that there's a lot more questions than there are answers. And one question I would have is, uh, other states that have done this, uh, you know, can we not reinvent the wheel? Are there ordinances from even other states that we might be able to, to look at and, and have some, some kind of. Guidance, uh, you know, since our state is kind of putting the cart before the horse and not giving us the.
Yeah.
The guidance that we were hoping for and then, and then bumping up the, the deadline here sooner than later. So. Um, I'd, you know, like to take. You know, take some real world examples if possible to, that maybe actually have been working.
AMC just put this out in April. It's a cannabis planning and zoning document for Minnesota counties and in here. Are some excerpts from specific counties in Colorado and Maryland and California and some other places, I believe, that, um, that have ordinance, local ordinances already and how they dealt with specific issues. So there, there are some examples already here. Um, I haven't really researched this much. We were. We were talking about waiting until after we know a little bit more before we bring it to the county board. So. We haven't spent a lot of time researching these, you know, who's been successful and what problems people have had. Those are all things that we're going to need to reach out to those people who have, have experience and knowledge in that area and get some assistance because. I agree with you. I don't want to reinvent the wheel.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Brent? Thanks, Brent.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Jim.
So, um, AMC, um. Is having, uh, board of directors is having their meeting Friday. And I know that this, uh, the, the cannabis discussion was, I think, on, on every agenda, uh, throughout their meetings, district meetings. Be kind of curious and maybe I'll inquire, um, while I'm there to see what your other. Uh, AMC districts, how, how their discussions went and maybe, uh. See how we can plan and prepare and, and try to help all, you know, with our discussions here. Um, I don't know if Commissioner Gould is, you're gonna be at the meeting as well or not, or? Okay. So hopefully I'll have some sort of report to, to give back in regards to this cannabis.
With that, Tom, it's time for administrators update.
All right. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Uh, just a couple of quick updates for you. I want to start with the jail project first. Uh, we do continue to make progress on the jail. Uh, we have the design operations team continuing to meet, uh, most recently. Uh, we did talk about some adjustments to the design I thought I'd bring forward to you. Uh, including, uh, the reduction of some overly large areas to reduce square footage in the jail and also bring the price back down. Uh, but probably most notably is the, uh, decision to move the footprint of the jail a little bit further east and a little bit further north. And the reason that is, is that as we were going through the, the sort of floor plan and the site plan. Uh, we realized that we had kind of centered the facility nicely. I mean, it looked great on paper. But as we started to think through the future. And we started to think, well, where are the areas that were most likely to expand the building outward? It was to the south and to the west. So we figured, well, we might as well now give ourselves more room to the south and to the west to allow for that future expansion, even though we knew we were going to do that. Uh, this will give us actually between twenty and thirty more feet south and maybe up to about ten or fifteen four, more feet to the west. So, uh, so that's the small adjustment that we're doing right now. We need to make some slight adjustments to the civil plans. Uh, but we're, we're, uh, we're planning for that. Uh, we also continue to work on the design development cost estimate. Um, I'll be getting my first preview of that here probably. Uh, this week, uh, we've got a meeting set with Kraus Anderson to look at the design development, uh, cost estimate. Uh, as we move forward in design and we get these revised cost estimates, that gives us a little bit more. Uh, knowledge about where we are on budget or if we're off budget and what needs to happen. Uh, what we're trying to do here is use these, um, these cost sort of checkpoints. To help ensure that we remain on budget and if we're not, that we make those adjustments to, uh, the, the plans. Now as, when they're less costly than they are sort of at the end of the, of the design process. Um, of course, we won't really know what the jail's cost is going to actually truly be until we bid the project. And of course, that's not going to happen until late summer, early fall. Uh, but this step will get us much closer to a, a, a better number. Also wanted, I know that most of you are aware of this, but mostly for the public, I wanted to just, um, congratulate, um. The sheriff's office and Health and Human Services and others in regards to the National Association of Counties. Award that we received, the achievement award for twenty twenty-four, and this is a SET program. Uh, Commissioner Gould was great to encourage us to apply for this, uh, which we did. Um, as you all know, the reset program very well, mostly for those who may not. It's a collaboration between. Uh, Health and Human Services, the Criminal Justice and the Public Safety Arms of the county. Um, and the program consists of having a case manager that's embedded inside of the jail facility that in, uh, that engages with inmates. As they prepare to exit the jail, uh, by giving them a different sorts of resources or access to resources. And that program continues for about two months after the person or up to two months after the person leaves the facility. Um, the intent is to try to reintegrate them quickly and effectively back into the community so that they're. Uh, less likely to reoffend and, and more likely to be, um, contributing members of, of society. So, uh, the program has had, as you know, pretty, pretty great success, uh, up to this point. I'm glad that that success was recognized by the Association of. Uh, or excuse me, the National Association of Counties.
Um, Tom, can I just interrupt for a second? Can we maybe have Amanda come to a work session where maybe, and, and again, for the public's. Perspective of, uh, uh, maybe a broader overview of the reset program and then our ability to be able to present that award to her because that really was her work and. Um, so I. because that really was her work, and so I think that would be appropriate.
That sounds great. We'll work towards that.
Thank you.
Just really quickly, I did send an email earlier about the Budget Committee. And so we are putting the calendar together currently, and as you know, we typically try to have two commissioners serve on the Budget Committee. That allows us to sort of streamline the approach and kind of roll up our sleeves and spend a lot more time together on the budget. I just was going to inform you that previous membership last year, Commissioner Carlson and Commissioner Gould were on the committee. The previous year was Commissioner Sumner and Commissioner Gosvig, and the previous year were two former commissioners, Commissioner Lukachek and Commissioner Olson, just so you have that sense of where we are. It looks like based on past practice, I consulted with the county auditor treasurer, that essentially Commissioner Gosvig and Commissioner Anderson would be next up, but that's for you to decide. And so I'll pose the question to you, but we would like to get that finalized so we can begin planning accordingly. The meetings will be held the week of July twenty-ninth, and depending upon who serves or is willing to serve, we can make some adjustments to the schedule. I think Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Gosvig have indicated a willingness to serve on that, and they've given us some times and dates that would work. But the board is the one that makes the decision as to who serves on the committee. And so I'm posing that question to you also that we can just tidy that up and then put it into the schedule. So I'll pause there for.
Anyone have any objection to Commissioner Gosvig and Commissioner Anderson serving on the Budget Committee? Looks like that's okay.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll proceed accordingly. Lastly, just to remind you of a couple of dates. The first one is tomorrow, Wednesday, June nineteenth. That is our first observance officially of Juneteenth. And so county offices will be closed in observance of that holiday, except for essential services, as you know. Also, I wanted to remind you that Thursday, June twentieth, the following day, from eleven AM to two PM, we'll have the Wellness for Life Summer Solstice Expo. This is our second year kind of holding this expo as part of our reboot of the wellness program. So we'll have lots of vendors coming out. It'll be over here in the courtyard and also kind of drift into the facility here as well. So that again is Thursday from eleven to two. And you are, of course, welcome to attend and participate in all of that. And then lastly, I just want to remind you, it came up a little earlier in our conversation at the work session, June twenty-fourth from eleven-thirty to one-thirty is the county's Public Health Open House, where you'll have an opportunity to tour the new remodeled space that we've been working on, meet the staff, learn about public health programs, projects and services, enjoy some refreshments, you know, talks amongst the staff, that kind of stuff. So that will be again on June twenty-fourth from eleven-thirty to one-thirty. And that's all I have for you.
Thanks, Tom.
You bet.
Any other business that we need to talk about other than the agenda? Looking at the agenda, does anyone have any comments about the upcoming agenda? Seeing none, we will be in recess until five o'clock. And don't forget, at six o'clock, we have the Board of Equalization. Thank you.